I'd like to call the meeting of the Carson City Planning Commission and the Growth Management Commission to order. Could the Secretary call the roll, please?
Chairperson Wendell, Vice Chairperson Aswin.
Here.
Commissioner Castro.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Sattler.
Here.
Commissioner Steele. A quorum is present.
Thank you. At this time, we entertain public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Could you lead the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is there. I just didn't read it. At this time, we'll take any public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission and the Growth Management Commission, including any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Please step forward and state your name.
My name is Jerry Clausen. I live at 18 Millimand Way here in Carson City. My subject is the medical marijuana facility. I just have a couple of questions. Yes?
The medical marijuana facility is an item for action on this agenda.
It isn't?
It is.
Okay.
So, we would ask you to reserve your comments until that is...
Until that time. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, approval of the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes as written.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Modification of the agenda. We have one item that is on the agenda, but the applicant has withdrawn the application. So, it would be under the public hearing, SUP-15-023. So, we will not be hearing that one.
For anyone in the... That's the one at 5250 Highway 50 East. They withdrew after we sent out the notices. So, if anyone is here for that one, they have withdrawn that. No further action is going to be taken on that application.
Okay. Moving on. Item F1, SUP-dash... Oh, disclosures. Yeah. Keep thinking... Does any commission member have a disclosure at this point?
Nope.
Now, we can move on to the public hearings. Item F1, SUP-15-020 for possible action. To consider a request for a special use permit from Linda and Norman Ritter, property owner Linda P. Ritter, to allow a detached accessory structure that exceeds 75 percent of the size of the primary structure on property zone, single-family, one acre, SF-1A, located at 1475 East Clearview Drive, APN-009-181-21.
Thank you, and good evening. Lee Plemmel, Community Development Director. I'll be giving the presentations this evening for all of the staff reports. The staff reports were written by... Between me and Kathy and Susan. The staff report in your packet was written by Kathy Green. I'll be giving the presentation. I'll give you a little bit of a presentation and overview. On this one, I'd just like to start by saying, in the... On the staff report, the application, the address is correct. In the staff report, the address is listed as 1575 East Clearview Drive. It's actually 1475, and that was... It was erroneously 1575 on the agenda. So, there's actually been a revised agenda posted, and I think that was sent out. Also, I want to note for the record that the public hearing notice that was sent out to the property owners has them... Had the map on there identifying the property and the correct APN. So... But, just want to clarify that for the record. So, just proceeding with this, this is the request that requires a special use permit because the applicant is proposing a detached accessory structure that exceeds 75 percent of the size of the primary structure. So, going through the... Little bit on the... Where the property is located and some other information. This property is near the corner of Clearview Drive and Hillview Drive as outlined there, the triangular piece in the center of the aerial overhead. It does have an existing residence on it. I think zooming in here, a little bit closer on the aerial, you can see the existing house. And I have a site plan coming up. The proposed structure is to be towards the south end of the property as identified on the map there. Here's a site plan, so kind of toggling back a little bit, back and forth there. The site plan shows where the existing house is here, and the proposed accessory structure will be back here. It's a 2,000-square-foot, about 48 feet by 42-foot structure, a total of 20 feet... 24 feet high at the peak. So, just... Yeah. And I think these have some photos of the surrounding site, but it's... This is in a neighborhood that's one acre zoning. There's a number of properties, as the applicant has shown and demonstrated in the application, that have similar structures in this neighborhood and in this vicinity. Notices were mailed out to surrounding property owners in accordance... In accordance with the Carson City Municipal Code and NRS, and it turned out to be a total of 472 feet from the subject site in order to get the required minimum of 30 adjacent different property owners. And as of the writing... Actually, as of this evening, we've received no comments either for or against this application. And I'll conclude with that and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Plemmel?
I understand the notice of public hearing, but I just want to know if... Did the applicant themselves contact their immediate neighbors?
I think we'll have to ask the applicant.
When they come forward? Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Plemmel? Would the applicant like to come forward? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. For the record, Linda Ritter, Norman Skip Ritter. And we did make contact. As a matter of fact, one of our neighbors is here today. And we made contact with several of our neighbors, and we received support, general support of those that we talked to. There was one... That's the house, right? As I'm looking at it to the right, which is to the east, we could never make contact with them. Nobody was there.
Okay. I'm sure that they received... Or they were mailed notice.
Yeah, but they received.
Right.
They were... They stayed inside. Inside.
Yeah.
Okay.
We made an attempt on that one, but the others, we haven't...
Okay. So, you have received a copy of the staff report and the conditions of approval.
Yes.
Are you in agreement with those?
Yes, we're fine.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for...
And I appreciate you doing that. I think that's a great sign of good neighbor, not to just rely on the public hearing. I think that this... You know, in our community, we need more of that. So, thank you for that. My only question to Mr. Plemmel would be if there's any outstanding that comes to mind points with regards to FEMA. Your question... Your point here is to fall within FEMA requirements, and if there's anything in particular of substantial that you feel should be mentioned at this time.
I believe the applicants have been made aware in researching this with the flood zone and been in contact with engineering.
We are talking to them right now, as a matter of fact, because according to the... And I checked this before we purchased the property, and I got a little bit of conflicting information. But, you know, there's a change in that area because of the freeway with what's happening with all of the flood zone. Now, when the maps refiled, it may change that. But, looking at the staff report, what was required was that the elevations be checked by the building official, which, you know, there is a ditch behind that, so we would certainly do that in any case. So... But, I am in discussions with Rob Fellows about that to find out, to make sure that building and engineering understand where that is in the floodplain with the revisions that have taken place in that area.
Yeah. And I would say that the conditions don't list the full conditions that will be required because it is in the flood zone, but it says... It puts them on notice that it is and that they have to comply with the city's flood requirements. We're participation... We participate in the FEMA flood insurance program. We have pretty good regulations that give us a higher rating in that, and they'll have to comply with whatever...
Right. And again, it's a two-edged sword. It's if you want to build something that could get flooded out on your own property, then by all means. But, if there's anything that the city sees that could impact the city as a whole. So, I appreciate that.
It's a garage, and we're not really too concerned about the garage.
Right. Yeah. Okay. No, good. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Just for clarification, the property you couldn't contact is the house in the other triangle? Is that the...
Right underneath the white...
Right, right. That one. That's kind of on the other side of the triangle, which is quite a long ways from your property.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the Ritters? Is anyone from the public here to address this item? Okay. Bring it back to the commission. Any further discussion on this? Okay. Entertain a motion.
I move to approve SUP-15-020, a special use permit request to allow a detached accessory structure that exceeds 75 percent of the size of the primary structure on property zone, single-family, one acre, located at 1475 East Clearview Drive, APN-009-189-21, based on the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Second.
Seconds.
Okay. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. We're moving on to item F2, SUP-15-028, for possible action. To consider a request for a special use permit from Carson City Health and Human Services, property owner Carson City, to allow a double-faced LED changeable message center display sign on property zone, public community, public regional, PC, RPR, located at 900 East Long Mr. Plemmel.
Thank you. As you state, this is a request. This is going to... A proposal to replace an existing freestanding sign with a message display sign at the health department, the health center at 900 East Long Street, which is located on Long Street east of Rube Street. Probably fairly familiar with this location as well. It's next... Just south of the senior center. Zooming in a little bit, the blue outline is the Health and Human Services property with the building on it, the parking lot to the west. And if you... I put an arrow to the location where the proposed sign is going to be replaced. There's an existing... There's an existing freestanding sign at this driveway, at the westmost driveway, and there's a small freestanding sign at this driveway as well. Looking at the site, this is... This is the far west driveway. This is... In the... In this photo is the sign that would be replaced with the message center sign. Again, looking from that same side, you can see the southwest gas... No, that's... Sorry. It's not... Envy Energy Offices are across the street. So, this is looking back across the other way, across the driveway. To the west of this property are apartments, multifamily apartments, and I didn't take a photo looking back into the sun, but directly across, there's some other residential and office uses generally in that vicinity to the west. This is the proposed sign. Again, it's a little bit higher than the existing sign, but not by very much, and it's going in the same place. And really, the difference is that it's going to have the ability to have the message center sign and the changing messages, moving copy and that sort of thing. I would like to point out a couple of conditions specifically regarding this because it is in a neighborhood that's an entrance to some residential areas and adjacent to residential areas. It's proposed in the conditions, and I haven't heard any feedback against this, that the hours of use for the message center sign would be limited from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. I think the... Our community center sign out here, I think it's... I think its hours are... It's 5:00 or 6:00 a.m. in the morning till 11:00 p.m., and then they turn it off. So, kind of similar hours to that, but then it's not on all night. There's... And then, of course, there's also some conditions in there that, again, we used for the community center sign related to the brightness, and that's been a good, successful out here, I think, in measuring the brightness and keeping it to a reasonable brightness that where it's visible but not too bright. And then, talking about message hold time, so it's not flashing and blinking and scrolling. And so, those conditions are included in the recommended conditions as well. Again, with this application, we sent notices out to surrounding property owners, had a couple inquiries about the sign, but as of today, have not received any written comments, either in favor or in opposition of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Plemmel?
I believe the residential apartment areas are on both sides of that center. There's some senior to the east of... Or, yeah, east of it, and then there's the apartments that you can see in the picture to the west. Correct? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So, I actually have to back out a little bit because the signs over here, so I... On the far left side of this photo, and to the left is the apartments that were in the photos. But, you have to actually back out...
Way out.
...to see the other...
Or way on the other side.
They're on the other side of the building, and from there, can't even see the sign.
So, the only ones really visible or would be close to it is the ones on the west side.
No. And Mark... Yeah. Mark Lipkowitz is the applicant with the sign.
You have the wrong sign.
Oh.
Yeah, it's in the wrong location. I just want to make sure that all you guys are looking at the right one.
So, it's this one that's going to be replaced? I'm sorry.
And then, that way, your question...
It's even further from the sign.
Okay. And that's not right.
That's...
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that, Mark. Thank you. Sorry.
Makes it easy.
Okay. I have a question. The proposed sign is eight square feet bigger than the regulation. Is that... Is there a reason for that? Is it based on the type of sign, or the... Is it a technical reason why you can't have 32 and you have to have 40?
I think that's...
Okay.
Yeah. That's probably a question for the applicant.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Plemmel? Okay. If the applicant would come forward.
Hi. I'm Sandy Warko with Carson City Health and Human Services. So, I'm the applicant with the health department.
And I'm Mark Lipkowitz with Custom Sign here in Carson City. To answer your question, for affordability, when you get to small signs, the LEDs have to be really, really close together so that they don't look pixelated where the picture starts blowing apart and you see more dots than you see picture. And the closer the LEDs are together, well, then the price just starts going through the roof. So, you need a little bit bigger sign here so you can use a little wider spacing LED, and there's a happy medium between the pixel spacing and the price. So, it's not too expensive, but it makes sense, and it's not too pixelated where you're... If you look at the...
Carson City Fire Department.
Carson City Fire Department, you'll see what we tried not to do. It's very pixelated and hard to read because it's so small, but yet affordable. So, we're going for a 16-millimeter and a little bit bigger matrix just so that it's affordable, but very well... You can read it very well.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
So, it's for cost and clarity, basically?
Absolutely. Keep the cost down, but make it a little easier read.
Better clarity.
I'll come back to that when we're done with you, but my comment has nothing to do with your application. Have you... You've read the staff report and the conditions of approval?
Correct.
Are you in agreement with those?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Do you have any further comments on the application?
No. We're just... We would be very excited to have this type of messaging to get out to the public, our, you know, public health messaging.
Sure. I understand completely that it would be a very valuable tool for your department. Mr. Sattler?
Do you... It doesn't really... But, do you see the sign running to the max allowable, or probably less hours depending on your hours of operation or whatever?
Probably more to our hours of operation. I think, you know, the plan would be closer to our hours of opening, maybe a little bit longer into the evening with the cap... Capturing all of the hours of traffic on that street and best transportation on that street so we could really get our messages out.
But, with the hours you have, it gives you flexibility if you find you need a little more or whatever.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you. I'll just, at this point, raise my issue in that would it be more appropriate... Well, not aside from this special use permit, should we look at redefining the regulation for LED to allow for the larger sign so that we have a standard that allows for clearer signs and so we don't have to have the special use permit if somebody needs to... Is in the same situation that they're in?
That's something we could look at, is amending the code. You know, generally, I think we need to revisit sign regulations as they pertain to LEDs anyway. For these types of signs that don't... That aren't bigger than is permitted by code, and they're just replacing them, they're allowed to do them by write, and we currently don't have brightness regulations. So, I mean, you know, one of the things, we'd like to incorporate those types of things. So, I think that's a discussion we need to have down the road. So, certainly, think about that.
Okay. I would agree that we should take a look at that aspect of it. Okay. If there's no other...
I was going... Sorry, Commissioner... Vice Chairperson Aswin. That goes back to Steve Reynolds as a planning commissioner saying that, and we haven't done it yet, but it is something we would... Should be looking at. I agree. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Bring it back. If there's no further discussion, any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any comments from the commission?
Motion?
I'll take a motion.
I move to approve SUP-15-028, a special use permit to allow replacement of the existing Health and Human Services freestanding monument sign with an LED changeable message center display sign approximately six feet, seven inches in height and 40 square feet in sign area in the same location as the existing sign, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report.
Thank you. A second?
A second there.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous? Mr. Owen? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we will recess the Planning Commission at this time and come to order as the Growth Management Commission. Could we have the roll call for the Growth Management Commission, please?
Chairperson Wendell, Vice Chairperson Aswin.
Here.
Commissioner Castro.
Here.
Commissioner Sattler.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Steele. Quorum's present.
Thank you. Moving on to item F3, GM-15-024, for possible action. To consider a request for a growth management review from Surf Through Inc., property owner Belinsky Properties LLC, to allow for average daily water usage above the 7,500 gallons of water for a car wash on property zone, General Commercial, G.C., located at 3555 South Carson Street, APN-009-122-02. Mr. Plemmel.
Thank you. And this growth management application is required because the city ordinance requires that any commercial or industrial use that uses more than 7,500 gallons of water on average per day must attain growth management approval from the Growth Management Commission, which is the Planning Commission acting as the Growth Management Commission. We have this applicant... This car wash is estimated to use a little over 8,000 gallons per day. It's... That's pretty minimal. We've had applications that use much... A lot more than that, but it's over the threshold, so we need to bring it to you for approval. And the engineering public works department has reviewed it and incorporated... Really has no issues with that type of uses, can accommodate that type of use for this commercial use, and has no issues in any condition that they have have been incorporated into the recommended conditions of approval. So, this application, this is for a new car wash on South Carson Street. It's just north of Coontz Lane and just north of the old Toyota site that's on the corner there. I think they sold used cars from this site. Zooming in a little bit, has pretty much just a vacant parking lot right now, so it'd be nice to get a new use in here, too. And just some photos of it of how it exists now. So, I think, again, to get some new development in there will be a good thing generally. This is a site plan, again, kind of with North Arrow going up, Carson Street to the left, pull in, and staff recommends approval. Growth Management... For Growth Management, there aren't... There are not notices sent out to surrounding property owners, but this has been published, and we have not received any comments regarding this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Plemmel?
I'm... You know, if he's waiting for the applicant, I'm intended to conclude with this. The applicant is unable... Because of family matters, unable to attend tonight, so that's for this item and the next item. So, I want to enter for the record, I got an email from him that he is... Has reviewed the staff report and is in agreement with the staff reports and conditions as written, and he said he was still going to try to attend. I assume he has not been able to attend, though. Kathy Green was... Did prepare the staff report, the next one, but we're recommending approval. If there are some really burning questions that we need him for, we can continue the item. We'll try to answer the questions best we can, and just recommend that you continue on with it unless there's some issues that really need to be resolved.
Okay. I have some issues, but some other members of the commission?
We're basically in our capacity tonight just approving excess water... The additional water usage.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So, in light of the comment, my thought process is at what point does one more or two more become too many when taking into consideration the overall impact on the city's infrastructure? How many car washes already exist? I understand the right to do business, but unlike sandwich shops or pizza establishments, which are already overabundant in this community, a car wash has an environmental and, more importantly, substantial impact on our infrastructure, especially one that is applying or asking for approval of an amount of 639 gallons more of water usage a day for a total of 233,235 gallons a year, multiplied by two, equalling 466,470 gallons of excess water usage a year. Unlike a hotel, which may have gained approval, a car wash doesn't help draw tourism, increase residents, retire here, or, in my opinion, fall in the category of smart development, at least one that is not asking for a special use permit for excess water usage. My opinion and comment is... And I wish the applicant would have been here, but what could be done to fall under what is already the guidelines, which would have been 659 gallons less per day? So, I don't know where we want to put that or if this should be continued, but I just... You know, I like to hang my hat on one thing, which is smart development. I know there's not a restriction with how many business... How many car washes you can have, and you have a right to do business if you do everything[1782.00] have and you have a right to do business if you do everything within the legal spectrum and code, but I struggle with this one. So, where should we go with this? I personally would like to see the applicant.
Anybody else have any questions? I have, I also would like to comment on the water usage piece of it. I mean, that the public works has suggested or has required that there be a recycling requirement in there, but they haven't set any percentage of recycling. At a minimum, I would think that they would have to recycle the amount that is over the allowed amount. And I would like to know if that's a possibility from the applicant and if it isn't, then I have, I have some, I agree with Mr. Castro that it may not be appropriate to be approving excess water usage, especially in a period of drought.
And, you know, I know we've done this training and ethics and everything, so I believe we have a representative from the city attorney's office, so please let me go if we're, you know, out of line or wrong, but I agree, that's, we need to see the applicant to discuss, even if it's in a matter of recycling. And what gets to me is these car washes are doing legal business, but we're beginning to get a lot of them and if we keep approving the special use permits, we're going to hurt ourselves with our infrastructure down the road.
Unless you have a comment, Lee, I'd like to make a motion from the-
Yes, I do have a comment.
Okay.
And I would like to look it up to see if there's a time constraints on the, on the, on this, acting on the application, yeah.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, absent some time restriction within, for you to act, based on your comments, it's appropriate for the vice chairman to-
Make a motion to continue.
To table, it's within your discretion to table it until the applicant is able to appear.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sattler, you had a comment?
Well, just adding to what Mr. Castro said, we're only considering the six hundred and some gallons, there's also the fifteen thousand gallons allowed each day, which is, you know, and again, with the drought situation, it just makes it difficult or whatever, but I know we're only addressing the extra water usage, so.
So, can I respond to some of these things now? All right, so, obviously, in light of the news and the actual, the drought, four-year drought that we're in and things, I mean, this is, this is a topic in probably unfortunate timing form, unfortunate timing that our city engineers are down at the public works conference and not able to attend to answer a lot of these questions. They've just given a water report to the board of supervisors at the last meeting and timing wise, it's at the next planning commission meeting with growth management that we have this discussion about allocating water usage. I could tell you there, in terms of water usage, this is about what a restaurant uses. A new restaurant comes in, it's about what, this is about the kind of water they use. We're not at the point of stopping growth because of, so, again, I'm not giving the water report, I don't have the information, but the message is not that we're not going to stop growth. The discussion with growth management, that, I don't know where public works is going to go in the past, but actually with the resources that the city has, they've had discussion about raising that limit above seventy-five hundred gallons per day. That's not for discussion right now, that's going to be for discussion next month and I don't know that they'll do that this year because some infrastructures, they're not fully complete yet, connected to Minden, but we'll see where that, we'll see where that goes. But, but you're right, we don't prohibit. I don't think we can start denying growth management because we don't like car washes, because it's a car wash and it is a water usage issue and can we have it? And I wish I could explain the water situation and, I mean, we're talking a half hour report on kind of the water situation and looking where that's going to really fully explain it, that we give to the planning commission every, every year during growth management. So, I'm not sure, and I'm sure they're using recycling as part of it to the fullest extent possible and that's where they are to get to this. I know Danny Rodder sitting here would tell you they have not the least bit concern about providing water to another, another eight thousand gallons per day in the next year or the foreseeable future. And I don't know, the long-term question about when you stop them, I don't know that you stop them today because we're going to run out of water when we have seventy-five thousand people twenty years from now. Be careful about that.
Well, if we have to approve this, why is it even coming to us?
It's a threshold that's established every year under growth management that deserves some higher scrutiny, that's not an automatic approval, that's correct. And we rely, I rely in the planning department to put this together, to bring to you on the public works department to put together their recommendations on whether or not, what's needed in the infrastructure to accommodate this type of use and what are the impacts going to have? Can they handle it? Is it within the growth management plan that they have? And that's all I can rely on and I think that's what the growth management commission can rely on unless-
Well, I don't doubt that there is adequate water to supply this use and that's, I don't think that that's really the overarching issue.
It's a precedent. It's a precedent that, coming from the city of Los Angeles where the infrastructure, it was all overdeveloped and if you keep approving these, allowing for these special use permits and they keep getting approved somewhere down the road, this is an environmental, it's a water issue, it's an infrastructure issue. And every time, I know from a legal standpoint, if I'm not wrong, as soon as this is approved and next week someone else wants to build a car wash, which they have the right to do, it sets precedent that they can come back and say, well, you approved this application, why are you not approving my application? And technically down the road, say, we want to sue the city for not approving my application. So, it's a beginning snowball of setting precedent with regards to water usage and I just feel it needs to be scrutinized heavily.
But again, we're only here in our capacity to approve the additional six hundred gallons.
Correct.
And I might like to add that the number of car washes is going to be inevitably established by the people in Carson City and their need. And we did have a car wash, what, on North Carson that's gone out of business, so the actual overall usage is not going to really be that.
And I understand, I'm not arguing the car wash, I understand the right to do business, I'll state that again. What I am concerned about is the six hundred and fifty, thirty-nine gallons, oh, six thirty-nine, and which turns into ultimately for two facilities in a year, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy gallons.
Well, I would like, I would like to suggest that if we are going to act on this, that we add to the conditions that they recycle the overage, that that be a minimum requirement.
Let me suggest something. I think the overage is, what they're using is based on their operation, that recycles water and that's an estimate. Know that there's capacity for that. I have the gentleman's phone number, so what has been suggested is that we could table this till the end of the agenda if we need to continue it at that point, but let's continue, if we could, what we could do is continue on with the rest of the items on the agenda, come back to these items at the end if we take a break, give me a chance to try to contact the applicant and see if we could figure out how to get some answers and maybe get them through the speaker here.
Okay.
So, is any action needed to table this to the?
Yeah, I would move that we table the item until we have contact with the applicant. Well, if you're tabling, that just means later in the meeting.
F3 and F4.
Pardon me?
F3, items F3.
Items three and four. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, all those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Okay, we'll table this until we can get in touch with the applicant. Moving on. Well, we, actually, we will adjourn as the growth management commission at this time and we'll come back to growth management later, or actually, we, is it, we want to adjourn, we'll just recess. We will recess the growth management commission and reconvene at this time as the planning commission and consider item F5 for possible actions, SUP-15-026, to consider a request for a special use permit from BioNeva Innovations, Carson City, property owner Desert Investment Group, LLC, to allow a medical marijuana production facility on property zone General Industrial located at 2919 North Deer Run Road, APN zero zero eight dash five three one dash four six. And I think that we should probably consider five and six together, so I'll read number six also. SUP-15-027 for possible action, to consider a request for a special use permit from BioNeva Innovations, Carson City, property owner Desert Investment Group, LLC, to allow a medical marijuana cultivation facility on property zone General Industrial, G I, located at 2919 North Deer Run Road, APN zero zero eight dash five three one dash four six. Mr. Plummel.
Thank you. Again, this is a special use permit for a combination facility at the same location in the same building for both cultivation, which is the growing of medical marijuana plants and production, which by definition includes extracting the oils and doing various production and creating edibles out of medical marijuana products. This proposed location is on Deer Run Road, as shown there on the vicinity map, in the Big Horn Drive, Sheep Horn Drive facility on the, on the northeast side of Deer Run Road. Zooming into this, this property, it's, if you're familiar with the area, that the building just to the, kind of the north, north of it there is the Capital Glass Building. The subject parcel currently doesn't have a building on it, it's used for, it's used for outside storage. This is from the street view, looking at the front of that, again, with the Capital Glass Building to the left there and just vacant storage. This is from kind of up the hill, up, I think it's Morgan Mill Road on the, on the east side of Deer Run Road, looking back towards the west sort of, across one property and it's the property with the tanks and storage on there is where the proposed facility is to be located. The proposed buildings and this is a site plan with the shaded area being the property where this is proposed to be located. It's an industrial type building that will be, is proposed on there with some parking in the front and some access and just to show this is in your packet, it's just an industrial building with the limited access. The cultivation and production facilities are not the type, are not an MME facility where people go to buy the product, this is strictly a wholesale, they, from this, they take to the, they take the products to the dispensary, so that's, that's where the public comes in and out, this is more of a industrial enclosed in the building type of use and with, with deliveries coming out of, coming out of this building, so that's the type of use that this is for both these items. I would note that Susan prepared both of these staff reports, Susan Dorpansky, the planning manager, of course, she's not able to be here tonight to present this as she usually has, but as she's been doing, I think all of the medical marijuana special use permits, she's reviewed it, included all of the conditions of approval that are applicable to meet the standards of the Carson City Municipal Code for this type of use and is recommending approval based on the findings in the staff report. So, with this one, we do have some public comments that we've received. As of when we did the staff report and before sending the staff report out, we had, as of the writing of the staff report, we had one comment which is included in your packet. It's from the representative of administering trustee of the trust that owns the property at 5665 Morgan Mill Road and I think that is the property on which the Bureau of Land Management leases their building and, and of course, you have that application, he's opposed to it for various reasons, including the cultivation and use of marijuana remains a violation of federal law. And then, not noted in your staff report, but included in the packet, right after that item on page twenty-eight is another, another letter of, I guess, general opposition from Taiyo America, which is at 2675 Antler Drive and generally, again, you have that to read, general concerns about security measures and needed implants and the types of activities that will be performed at the proposed site, so perhaps the applicant can address that. And a general concern about foot traffic, but as, and the general public visiting the area, but as I've noted, that's, it's not a retail location, it's an industrial location. And then finally, at the end, I gave you from the applicant, a piece of late information that just corrects a source reference within the packet. And I'll conclude my presentation with that and be available for questions.
Okay, any question for Mr. Plummel?
Mr. Plummel, I believe there's another facility was approved in that area and we received a letter from the same folks with the federal government on that one as well, wasn't it?
I believe so.
Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Step forward.
Yes, my name's Robert Lauder, I'm with RL Engineering and I've prepared the application for the, for the owner and for BioNeva, the operator.
Okay, so you received the staff report?
Yes, sir.
And you've read the conditions of approval?
Yes, sir.
And you are in agreement with those?
Yes.
Okay. Have you seen the letter from Martin Eisenberg, the representative of the owner of the property at 5665 Morgan Hill Road?
Yes.
Would you like, care to address his concerns?
I guess I can express an opinion, but I think that the, the questions that he raises are legal in nature and I'm not a lawyer.
Okay. Okay, and the ques-
I don't, I don't think that the grounds are supportable in this state, but that's my opinion.
Okay, and the letter from Taiyo America?
I appreciate their concern, yes, I did see their, their letter and I think it's, in my mind, simply unfortunate that we could not speak with them to allay their fears because the kind of things that they, the points that they raised, I don't think are really applicable to this situation, namely, things like increased foot traffic and that sort of thing are just not applicable to the way this is intended to operate.
Can you, their, one of their biggest concerns, I think, is the security issue. Would you care to address how you're dealing with security of the facility?
Actually, I think John Orem, who is one of the operators, can address that better than I can. I can ask him to come forward.
Okay.
Yes, hi, John Orem. Yeah, we submitted a detailed security plan as part of the state application process and that was approved. We have security consultants that are local, I believe they're Reno. Anyway, the summary is, you know, perimeter lighting, access control points, so that every door has a key card or number code, burglar systems, cameras, with twenty-four hour monitoring, both with live, live feed, interior and, you know, exterior cameras. There will be, and the monitoring is both onsite and offsite. There is an onsite security office.
Be onsite.
Correct.
And is that twenty, that, but that'll just be during hours of operation or will that be twenty-four hours?
Correct, yes, and, yes, onsite is during hours of operation, a remote, full-time viewing is offsite.
Okay.
Through a service.
Okay, and they also raised the issue of odors and I assume that you have filtration system?
Yes, absolutely, filtration systems. Actually, the system is, the building is designed as a closed system, it does not have deliberate exchanged air with the outside, so we're able to really control the environment internally and the exchange is managed, it's, you know, we only exchange what we need to, when we need to.
Okay. Anybody have any additional questions?
Going back a little, was any effort made to con- Going back a little, was any effort made to contact the Taiyo American people, or?
That's not for me.
Just curious.
I'm sorry, but no attempt was made.
Mr. Owen?
Yeah, I would like to also ask, there's two residences in that area. Have you contacted them? There's one directly across the street?
My understanding is that letters were sent out to all of the-
I'm not talking about letters. I'm talking about you. Did you-
No, no, did not.
Okay. And you're aware of the handicap training and educational facility behind that?
I was aware that it's there, but-
And did you contact them?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is anybody in the audience here to address this item? Please step forward and state your name.
I've been reading this in the paper about all of the approval of these facilities to grow marijuana in Carson City. And it's medical marijuana, and the population of Carson City is about 60,000 people, okay? For the amount of facilities that I see being approved, I think you could supply all of northern Nevada with medical marijuana. So what is the need for more approval if there's not the local demand for it? Okay, that's the one issue. The people that protested that own the BLM building, they're the same property owner that has 5250, Highway 50, that just withdrew their package because they wanted to put medical marijuana on their property. So, you know, this seems to be a political football. And I don't know how many facilities you need to prepare Carson City residents for medical marijuana. So you're going to keep approving and approving and approving. I know they have state license, but is it really, really necessary? And I have one question for Mr. Plemmel. On the 5250 is withdrawn. How much time do they have to reapply? I asked your staff and they didn't have an answer.
They, they-
5250-
I'm not sure what you mean, but they don't plan on reapplying. They've withdrawn.
They withdrew it.
They can, so if they want to apply, they can apply.
They can reapply?
Yeah.
There's no time limit?
You mean like they have to wait a certain time?
Yes.
Because it would, no, you know, I don't think they have to wait a certain, if they were denied, they would have to wait a certain time to go at the same, for the same application. But they weren't denied, so they, so they can resubmit any time.
Okay. So, so you're going to approve this one, and then they're going to come back even though they withdrew?
Could you address the commission, please?
Sure. So the fact that that one withdrew means that they could reapply?
Anyone can apply for a special use permit.
I don't think anybody can.
Well, as long as they have the state certification, they can.
Okay.
There's no limi-
How many do-
There are no limits in Carson City's medical marijuana ordinances on the-
Limiting the facilities?
Limiting the number of cultivation and production facilities.
Okay.
We are limited to two dispensaries.
Two disp, that's the limit on dispensaries? Okay.
Yes.
So Carson City is going to become a harvest capital for growing medical marijuana, and you have all of the municipal support to support that? Water, police, you have all of that?
According, according to the departments that have reviewed the application, they have no, they have, their concerns are, as long as they meet the requirements of the ordinance, they are, they are okay with that. They can supply whatever is needed to that, and it water, sewer, police, fire, they can supply the service.
So staff has recommended approval based on the fact that they have all of the support in line to-
Well, I think staff has recommended approval because they have met the requirements for a special use permit.
Okay. But this isn't special use?
And the requirements specifically for medical marijuana establishments that were adopted by the board of supervisors.
Right.
Sir, the state approved two dispensaries. They approved, if they gave the permit, unlimited growth and production and growth, which we have no control over. The state has given, they could have approved 20 of them.
Okay, so we can-
And basically, it's the state gave approval.
We can count on, if you approve these, then we can count on another dozen cultivations in Carson-
I don't know how many the state actually has approved, but we are just here to grant whether it is legal to go in the area it's going into. The state has given the license to all these people to apply for our approval to where it goes.
Okay, if you think it's a good fit, okay, I'm saying I think we should put some limits on what is being done here in Carson City. You made good comments on the environment for the car washes, which is another whole issue because of the drought. But, you know, with this here, I'm just seeing you're opening the floodgates to become the capital. This will be a junior Colorado, okay?
I think that much, much like the car wash item, though, that it's not, we're not in a position to actually limit the type of businesses that go in. If they're allowed under the city, state law and the city code, then as long as they meet the conditions for locating here, then we have, we have very little that we can say about it. We can establish conditions for their operation, but we can't restrict their ability to apply.
I just thought that you were the guidelines for considering good fits of things for Carson City.
I wish we were.
Okay.
I wish we were.
All right, thank you.
But on this, they're actually our hands. The state is giving the approval. They have given the licenses.
Well, then it should just be, just rubber stamp it then. What's, what's the purpose of this? If it's legal and it's okay, rubber stamp it. You're done.
Mr. Plemmel, you had-
Well, I was just, I have, he's right. We have had other applications, and I've said this in the past, just because I, that, you know, the plant, the planning commission is not in, in a position or your job to change the ordinance. There was, there was a, he's not listening. There was a process. There was a conscious discussion, a conscientious discussion and a conscious decision not to limit the number in the ordinance. So that's why we're getting the applications. And I don't think it should be put on you to now decide a limit. So, just a reminder that there was a process that came up with, with the number that we're getting.
Yeah, okay. And, and I think that ultimately, the market is going to determine who exists and who doesn't. Even though we've had a number of applications, there's no guarantee that any of those guys are going to open. So we'll, we'll just have to see what happens. Are there any, anybody else here to address that issue, this issue? There was a gentleman before.
Good evening, commission members. Mark Turner with BioNeva Innovations. And I just wanted to give you just a little bit of a, a cut of what life will be like in this facility if it does open. And you made a very salient comment earlier, and you made a good observation as well, is that this is all market-driven. And the market for this product is, it's up in the air right now. Even, even as people who have spent a lot of time researching this and studying this, we're still not certain what the market's going to be. It, you know, we've already invested a great deal of time and money into the state process, and in order to, to maintain our eligibility with the state, we need to continue through this process and go and get special use permits. You know, we hope to be able to open, but if there's not a market, we're certainly not going to open because this is not a small financial undertaking, as you can imagine. It is going to have to generate a real rate of return, or there will not be the investment made beyond what was necessary to get approval at the state level and the local level. So we don't know where it's going right now. We hope that the man would be there for us to be able to open, but it may not be. And that's, that's a possible reality there. But that can't stop us from, from continuing to engage in the process here and spend small sums of money to make sure that what we've already spent in terms of going through the state approval process isn't just thrown away. In terms of the operation of a facility like this, it's not heavily staffed. It's a building that plants will grow in, and you don't need a whole lot of people to tend to those while they're growing. The entrance and exit out of that would be, if you had six people working there, they would show up to work in the morning. They may leave for lunch, and at the end of the day, they'll be gone. And other than that, you know, you may have delivery operations leaving the facility at certain times, and that's it. And you, none of you guys would be able to walk up to that building and know what's going on in there. None of the neighbors would be able to. No one from Taiyo would be able to know what's going on in there. I think that they hear the word marijuana, all of a sudden their chest tightens up and everybody freaks out. But, you know, if we were growing tomatoes or anything else in there, it would be the same, very quiet, nothing going on. Again, as Mr. Oram alluded to, it's a closed-loop air system. There's not going to be discharges of odors that people might find offensive. So, again, this is, this is still in the planning process here. We're not ready to open tomorrow, and there's a lot of road yet to be traveled here. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wish to make a comment on this application? We'll bring it back.
Put them on them together or separately?
Yeah, well, we have to, we have to consider them separately. We could have discussed them together, but we have to, we would have to vote on them separately. So at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion on item F5.
I move to approve SUP-15-026, a special use permit request for BioNeva Innovations, Carson City, LLC, property owner Desert Investment Capital Group, LLC, to allow a medical marijuana production facility on property zone General Industrial located at 2919 Deer Run Road, APN 008-531-46, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
I'd just like to say, I understand the public's concern about an unlimited number of these types of facilities, but there is really, at this stage of the game, nothing that this commission can do to, to, to limit those. That decision has been made in the ordinance, in the, in the city's ordinance, and the only opportunity to change that would be to, to have the board of supervisors change the ordinance. Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
May.
Three, four, and one against? Mr. Owen, the motion passes. Entertain a motion for item number six.
I move to approve SUP-15-027, a special use permit request for BioNeva Innovations, Carson City, LLC, property owner Desert Investment Capital Group, LLC, to allow a medical marijuana cultivation facility on property zone General Industrial located at 2919 Deer Run Road, APN 008-531-46, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve that the special use permit. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
May.
Three, four, one opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify for the record, on those two items, the name does not contain the word capital.
You're reading it correctly.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
It's just for the record, so we-
Okay.
Put it right on the minutes. Thank you.
Okay. We will reconvene the Growth Management Commission to consider items, items F3 and F4.
Can we take a recess now?
Okay, we'll, we'll recess for however long. Five minutes.
It sounds like they're at a distance from the microphone, so I might need an interpreter, you know, somebody that can hear what they say, Lee, and then relay the message to me.
Yes.
Or I'll just try to speak louder.
Actually, that gentleman right there, I can hear pretty well.
Okay. You'll have to give us a minute, because we have to reconvene and give the secretary an opportunity to restart the recorder, and then we'll be back to you in just a moment. The Growth Management Commission, and we'll go back to consideration of items F3 and F4, the request by Surf Through Inc. for excess water, or water in excess of 7,500 gallons per day for a car wash. I'm sorry, what was your name again?
John Krompottic.
Okay.
KLS Planning and Design in Reno.
Okay. One of the concern, well, there were multiple concerns, but I think that the one that's most crucial at this point is the excess water. You know, we are not in a position to say, well, we don't think there should be any more car washes or whatever, but could you address the recycling aspects of your operation?
Yes, I will, thank you. It is the chairman, right?
Yes, it is.
What is your name, sir?
My name is Paul S. Wine.
Okay, I've presented to you before, I'm sorry, you know, obviously, it's very unusual for me to be doing this at arm's length, and I really appreciate you bearing with me. I'm with my daughter in Southern California, because I'm picking her up. She finished her first year of college, and I was just so committed to this trip, so I really appreciate being able to do this at arm's length.
Sure, not a problem.
Thank you very much. I am working with them. I was just telling Mr. Plummel, if you could trust us, please, that I'm working with these guys on another site in Reno, and the architect who really knows their technology and really knows their product more than the owner who I've been dealing with when I prepared the application for you guys, says, John, we're down to 12 to 13 gallons per bar per wash. So if you look at that monthly number that I prepared, that was, you know, an average of 10,788, which comes out to about 350 per day, is that right? And times 12, you can see it brings the number way down. I'm talking 12 gallons per wash. We used 20 per wash, based on one of the principals telling me that for this application, but I can guarantee you that's a very high conservative number. Because, you know, and you don't want to be overprost in these estimations, and we were, it sounds like, speaking with the architect, and he said you just don't need to estimate that much water use per wash.
So, what you're saying is that you don't think that you're going to reach that 7,500 gallons, but that you would like to continue or have the authority to go as high as the 8139?
You're exactly right. And I'm saying that because, again, we were being upfront with, you know, this process. The fact that we showed invoices from another site was the best estimation of water consumption, and it's high.
And it also includes landscaping, was what he said?
It includes landscaping.
Okay.
So if you focus on the, if you focus on, say, 13, they're telling me 12 or 13, and they just did another site in Arizona, and they said, we've proven it, that it's 12 or 13 per wash, you're well under the 7,500. But in terms of overall water consumption on the site that we used.
Okay, I'm going to allow another commissioner to ask a question.
Okay.
Commissioner Castro here. So, if 12 to 13 gallons per wash, so when you reach a certain number, then your organization would be willing to stop allowing washes in a month? Because we're talking about something that you can estimate but cannot necessarily control. You may come under on some months, you may be over in those months.
You're right. I mean, is that what's on the table? Is that big a deal to you? I'm just letting you know, here's the average car per wash.
What my concern is, is, and let me just state for the record, first of all, okay? I do want to state that I do strongly agree with the locations that have been chosen, as it is definitely an improvement of blight, and definitely with regards to location, smart development. However, my concern that I addressed earlier with you not on the phone or a part of this was the overall usage, which would come out to, pardon me for a moment, per facility, one facility, if allowed the amount the special use permit is asking for, would be 233,235 gallons per year, multiplied by two, equaling 466,470 gallons per year. It's my experience to always prepare for worst-case scenario as opposed to best-case scenario.
You know, in terms of the water, the car wash use, I think that's safe, and we can deal with that. The wild card here is, we're using another site that has landscaping that we don't know about, and I'm telling you that it's 12 or 13 gallons per wash. So I think we should focus on real restricted landscape on this site, and it's all going to take care of itself.
Okay, go ahead, Lee.
Thank you. I have some additional information to add. Danny Roder's not able to be here, but I managed to get a text from him in talking about this item. So he pointed out that the 8,100 gallons represents 0.036% of the maximum summer demand. So in terms of this application, I mean, what he's saying is, and his words are literally a drop in the bucket, I mean, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of gallons when you add it up. They're talking about acre feet of water at a time that is in the supply, that they're pumping through pipes each year and being used. I mean, when you think about it in gallons, it's a large figure, and I do wish, you know, you had the information that was presented to the board and to kind of put this all into context previously. And again, I'll have Danny come next month and give that presentation, and in fact, next month is also going to be a much larger water user than this that'll be before you, so it'll be very good timing to talk about it. So that's a number. Again, 0.3300 of a percent is what this is at maximum daily usage.
And I understand that, and again, my point is, at some point, this catches up to us. And now that we know we're going to have another one in front of us next month, so that's where my concern is.
I don't know who that commissioner was, if that's the same gentleman that asked me the question, but if you could just know that this is the best technology out there in water reclamation, in minimal water use for a car wash. The wild card here is landscaping, and what I'm hoping that we can all come to grips with is that we take care of the landscaping without turf. You know, turf is 80% of water consumption. And deal with trick irrigation, and this is going to be very manageable water use overall.
Mr. Sadler.
John, Commissioner Sadler, so what you said earlier, you built, the estimate of this was at 20 gallons per wash, and you're estimating 12 to 13, which is like 55, 60% of what it was billed on.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, so here's my next question. This goes to the city attorney, planning, and to the applicant. Can we ask the applicant to come back with newer numbers and continue this till our May Planning Commission meeting?
Well, see, what you're getting into now is, this growth management permit doesn't get into site design and a landscape plan. So, we're really in a very awkward position, because I'm saying I have new information since we made application, that's 12 or 13 gallons per wash. The rest is landscaping, again, based on the invoices that provided you from a site in California. And the trouble is, they will not, you've got an option on the land, they can't go forward on this deal without approval of the growth management permit. And they're not going to go do landscape design for something, you know, something that's so, a prelim landscape plan that's so committed to a site that doesn't have a growth management permit.
Okay, thank you for those comments. I'm going to bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any other commissioners have questions or comments on this?
Well, again, Commissioner Sadler pointing out that the average usage, even with the estimate at 20 gallons a wash, annual usage is still at 7,100 gallons. So, I guess this has to come before us at 8,000, because some months you will be higher, therefore you need our, no?
Landscaping. Right. It's before you now, because the estimated, based on the information that was originally provided, is that the average annual daily water usage, so it's averaged annually, is more than 7,500. And it is over 7,500, because the average of the other car washes in both their car wash usage and including their landscape usage gets it to that 8,100 number. And therefore, so kind of to go back to Commissioner Castro's question, if they proved to engineering that it was estimated that they were going to be below 7,500, it wouldn't be here in the first place or come back to you.
Okay, I think we're ready for a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Sadler.
Individually?
Oh, I'm sorry, public. Is there anyone here to address this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll...
I'd still like to make a comment on this.
Okay.
That addressing the number of car washes or whatever, like I said, there's already been one that's gone out of business. There's only so many people that are going to wash their cars. I'm not even sure that two more car washes in this town is even viable with other ones going out of business. It's up to the number of people that are actually physically out there that are going to get their car washed. So, you could add five of them, and three of them are going to go out of business. So, I'm not sure that a continuing problem is going to be created here with this.
Thank you for those comments.
Okay, we're ready for a motion.
Individually?
Yes, individually, please.
I move to approve GM-15-024, a request for growth management approval of Surf Through Inc., property owner Walinski Properties LLC, to allow for daily water usage above 7,500 gallons for a car wash on property zone general commercial located at 33555 South Carson Street, APN 009-122-02, based on the findings and subject to conditions of approval outlined in the staff report.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Owens. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Three, four, one against. Motion on item number four.
I move to approve, excuse me, GM-15-025, a request for growth management approval for Surf Through Inc., property owner's Gladys Peterson Trust et al., to allow for daily usage above 7,500 gallons for a car wash on property zone general commercial located at 1250 and 1300 East Williams Street, APN 002-441-10 and -11, based on the findings and subject to conditions of approval outlined in the staff report.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Owens. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Three, four, one against. Motion passes. Thank you. Three, four, one against. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we will reconvene as the Planning Commission and move on to item number, well, actually, we'll move on to item G, staff reports.
Okay, thank you for going, getting through that. Glad we got through that with at least some comments from him that worked out okay. So as I mentioned before, Susan's not available to present. She had her baby last weekend, and Max and Susan are all doing fine, so we'll miss her for a couple of months and be busy at the planning department without her, so bear with us for a couple of months. We didn't have any past Planning Commission items that went to the board in April to report on. However, in April, on April 20th, the downtown project design team conducted a workshop on the theming. I hope, I was actually out of town and at a planning conference, so I had to miss it. I heard some good things about the process and, you know, the historic theme, not too surprisingly, kind of rose to the top and will be used to kind of, for them to go out and work on towards 30% design. The results, just to announce, there'll be a website, and I know it's, it's still under construction, but it's carsonproud.com. Some of you may have seen the mayor's introduction to that at the beginning of the workshop, but again, carsonproud.com is where the results from the workshop and future information and plans will be posted. I know they're not, as of today, they weren't. It should be within the next week or two, though, that site will be up and running and things are on there. So the next, and for the public and for you, the next thing to put on your agenda is for the, for June 22nd, is will be the public open house for the 30% design. That's a Monday, June 22nd. The time is still to be determined, but it should be here again. It should be kind of through, through the lunch period and as well as after work. And I'll provide more information on that as we get closer to that. And also, I'll pass on any information to you as, as other things occur with regards to that downtown project. And finally, for me, I just want to note that we do have items for the May 27th agenda. We had a number on this agenda, got a, have a number on the next agenda. As I mentioned before, May is the time when we do our annual growth management review with the, with the Planning Commission. You establish the number of residential allocations available for the, that will be available for the next year, as well as the, the amount of water usage, average water usage per day for commercial and industrial uses. And I will have, make sure that they bring that presentation that they gave to the board recently on the water supply. It's a good presentation, and it's a good time for that. We also have a tentative subdivision map coming to you for an 18 lot, one acre subdivision off Hillview Drive. We have a variance that's related to lot line adjustment, and we have the, we've received the application for the Capital Mall project. That's the, that's the downtown office, office hotel, conference center, retail project that you've seen in, seen in the paper. That's a special use permit, and it is a growth management application for all of those uses and the water usage, so that'll be, that'll be part of it as well. So again, really glad that, we'll make sure that the growth management and water presentation are first on that one, because it's going to be important to have that information for that review. And I just want to note for that, too, I had a, because this is a, that Capital Mall is a really big project. There's a lot of interest, there's a lot of public interest. It's got a really big packet and a lot of plans. I'm going to, once it's complete and we get to the point where we know it's going to be noticed and put on the agenda in a, in a week or two, I'm going to try to, I'm going to post the application materials online, and I'll let you know when it's, when it's available so that if you want to spend a little extra time upfront familiarizing yourself with the, with the application, you'll be able to do that. We typically, they're just available. We don't, we don't always post them online, but certainly, it's public information. They're available in our office now, but we'll make it easy for you to get, as, talking to the district attorney, deputy DA, about that a little bit, just to make sure that you, as the persons that are going to be deciding that, should not, certainly not be debating it amongst yourself and discussing it, and really probably should not be discussing it and your opinions about it in the public or having other communications regarding it, because you are going to be the ones making the decision on the application. So just as you're looking, and you won't, if you're looking at it early, you, it's, that's, bear in mind, it's before our review and looking at all the, all the criteria and seeing if it meets it and conditions, but, but I think it'll be a good idea to give, for, take some extra time to look at that ahead of time. And that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for?
Couple, Lee. The downtown is, I know, reading in the paper, et cetera, and being at the meeting is being brought in stages. Was that being presented to us all at once in May, or is it just going to be the parking garage and the crossover?
The application is, is for the entire, entire project. Now, that's, it's for the entire project, but there will be aspects of it that will need to come back to the Planning Commission.
And also on that, like at that meeting, the proud meeting that I attended at lunchtime, going out and looking and commenting, I had made a point to say I was speaking as a private citizen, not as a member of the Planning Commission. Are we safe doing that?
Now, for the, for the Carson Street project?
Well, the, the meeting that they had about the downtown, or yeah, Carson, right.
Yeah, Carson Street, sure, yeah. The, yes, that's the right thing to do when you're at a public meeting, and if you're saying who you are and that you're representing yourself and not the Planning Commission is probably the right thing to do, yeah.
Thank you. One other quick thing on the wat, on the water. At what you mentioned, we may look at the, would that be to us or to the board or whatever, to possibly raise that 7,500 gallon?
The growth management, you're the growth management commission that make a recommendation, and ultimately, then it's up to the board.
Could that possibly come at the next meeting? We could address that.
That is, so, yes, the growth management item that's on your annual report is where you make the recommendations. Yes.
But Danny will do his presentation at the beginning of the, okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Any commissioners have any thing they'd like to report? Any comments? Hearing none?
Just make sure you give Susan our best.
Public comment. Public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission and Growth Management Commission, including any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. I see no one from the public wishing to comment, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.